Dev, can you hear us okay?
For a month now, hasn't it?
Six weeks.
Six weeks.
February fourteenth. It's gotten worse.
That's too bad.
Okay, we'll call a meeting in order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First order of business will be to approve the agenda. Do we have any changes, Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, you do have an amended agenda, and then since then, we've had a couple of other additions. I would note that on Friday, Governor Roden declared Good Friday and Easter Monday as administrative holidays in pursuit of your policy adopted in January. Those would be days off where county employees' offices would be closed. We wanted to bring that to your attention. And then, as of yesterday, I think John Bay was advised that state would like to be able to allow for bids for the Maitland Road Bridge Project. That's structure forty-one dash one eighteen dash one eleven. We're asking authorized to advertise for bids instead of bid opening for April twenty-second at eight-thirty. Otherwise, I don't know many changes.
It's your pleasure on that.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, we have motion in a second for approval of the amended agenda. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On conflicts, I have a conflict at eight-twenty-five. I will be recusing myself from the first item at eight-twenty-five, and Commissioner Jennings will handle that one. Anyone else have any conflicts?
Nope.
Okay. How about our meeting minutes from March eleventh?
Let's go through.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The bills, I've had my questions answered on the bills.
I'm good.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to allow payment of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And I believe we do have a travel request, Brenda.
We do. All right, this is a travel request for Dustin Schumacher to attend the International Motorcycle Gang Investigators Association Conference in Phoenix, Arizona, from May eighteenth to the twenty-third.
Is our manual request, I got that, and then also the floor.
Yes.
Sure.
They have an annual request that they have. It's quite pivotal during the rally to keep us posted with what's going on with the outlaw motorcycle gangs. In particular, this grant, or this comes by way of a grant where they repay up to two thousand dollars for us to send somewhere.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, at this time, would like to take a few minutes to... Now, don't you start that. Well, you're not, I'm gonna be kind. We want to thank you for all the many, many years of of your service to this county, as well as the friendship to all of us. We're all part of the one big family, and we hate to see you go, but we understand. Where's the certificate? Right here. I'd like to give you this and thank you for everything.
No, thank you guys for everything. I appreciate it so much.
Thirty years, right?
There are...
Yeah. Okay, Brenda, we'll check with personnel.
After I'm done crying. You all know me well, that's what I do. Brenda, Brenda, no crying and personnel or whatever you said. All right, first one is we have to do a correction to Chantel Easton. We were super at the last meeting. We had April seventeenth, and it should have been March seventeenth. And sleep, Tisdale made the motion. If we could just do a correction to that, to get the correct...
Start date for her.
Motion in second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next one is, I have a couple in the sheriff's office. To approve this step raise for Ashley Jobe as a full-time permanent correction officer, two grade two, base pay of twenty-six sixty per hour, and this will be effective March twenty-fifth. And then a classification change for Marina Cleveland as a full-time permanent sergeant, one grade one, base pay of thirty-five oh two, effective on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Most approve these sheriff's changes. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for to approval of the changes. Commissioner Sleep, did you have a discussion?
Audrey, Ashley is a third level, and Cleveland is the first level, and there's quite a little difference in pay. The one gets thirty-five oh two and the other gets twenty-six oh seven, and that's the third. Is it the time or the position?
It's the position. So Ashley is a correction officer, working in the jail, and then Marina is a deputy. And she is moving to the sergeant's position. So she's, so it went through deputy one, deputy two, and now is being reclassified as a sergeant. So different, totally different job duties. So that's why there's a difference in...
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next one is for general government buildings. That's Laurel A. Palmer. Laurel is also works part-time in the sheriff's office. She is going to help Tim out as a custodian, one grade one, not to exceed eight weeks. So it's just a temporary position and a base pay of twenty twenty-one, and it'll be effective three twenty-five.
Brenda, move.
Yes.
The sheriff did not approve that. I forgot to take it off, so that's...
Oh.
That's not one.
No one. Okay. Never mind.
They don't need it? Yep, don't need it.
Yep, no, no worries.
Okay.
No worries. All right, so planning and zoning, Amy Miller. This is a step raise, going to planning and zoning assistant tech, grade two, base pay of twenty-six seventy-eight, effective three twenty-three of twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then do we need to do anything with Easter, Good Friday?
We noted that. Do you want a motion on it?
You don't have to. We just kind of bring it to your attention. Good Friday and Easter Monday.
Thank you. That's all I have for personnel.
All right. DOT weed spring agreement. Do you have that there, Bruce?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the annual weed spring agreement in the county and the DOT. We'll be looking for authorization to have a chairman sign. I think the amount this year, or last year, was was twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-four, and this year it's thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-six. Looks like it's mostly the same from what I can tell.
Okay. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we've got some abatements. Brett? You have the floor.
All right. What's the first one that you have listed there? Broken wheel, okay. All right, broken wheel. This was an error made in our office. They did apply on time for owner occupied, and it was just put in as non, and it should have been as owner occupied. So basically, what we have to do is take off the value of the house as non-owner occupied and add it on as owner occupied.
Okay, clerical error.
What's our recommendation?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to follow the abatement. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. John Walsh has a house in Deadwood that had a fire September and twenty-fourth, and he's asking for an abatement on the three months for the last three months of twenty twenty-four. That would be, the amount of valuation would be sixty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-five. And it was a total loss.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, the last one is the Salvation Army, New Salvation Army Building in Spearfish. They bought it halfway through the year, and they became exempt. So they get eighty-five percent of the building was exempt for six months. So that would come out to be eight hundred and three thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars in tax, or not tax, but in valuation.
Were they doing at least now fifteen percent of the building to suffer?
Storage, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so eighty-five percent for six months.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Sheriff, sir.
Good morning.
We're running some time because we've got a public hearing coming up, and it's, we're moving too fast this morning.
All right. I'll talk slowly. Well, I'm happy to report that things are going exceptionally well up on the hill, as it were. Put a word, I would use tremendous, we have a tremendous group effort. Once again, Tim's crew, phenomenal. Greg's crew, unbelievable what they've done for us, as well as my own coworkers. And in particular, Jamie Basika Olsen is just right, right on top of everything for us. Has all the answers, and the answers are right when I need them. That isn't to say that we haven't had an issue here or there. It's a big building, and we've worked through them with RCS at our side, and that's going extremely well. We moved in, as you know, on the third. I think by the fifth, if memory serves me, we had passed our inspection with the U.S. Marshals. By the following Thursday, which would have been the thirteenth, we got our address updated with D.C. That's a testament to the help of our local marshals. And I'm happy to report that as of today, we have forty-three federal inmates. Forty-three federal inmates puts us well within our business model that we had hoped to hit. That's about three thousand and ten dollars a day, which, should we hold somewhere close to this average, would be over a million dollars in annual revenue. This number, I anticipate, is going to go up, is going to go down. What we're hoping for is the average. And I still feel very confident that we've got a commitment from our local marshals that'll see that number reality. We've got some other irons in the fire that I'll be discussing with you on how I think we can potentially increase some of this revenue, which is to say, we're not going to sleep. We're not happy where we are. We're going to keep moving forward and do our very best to diminish the burden of this debt service payment, get as much of it off the backs and shoulders of our local constituents, the taxpayers. Outside of that, Dr. Alka and I have been working on the Sturgis ambulance. I'll say issue. We continue to work on that and or hope that soon we can make a recommendation to the board. Do you have anything to add on that?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. I think that it's quickly approaching a time when it would be appropriate to do a ribbon cutting up at the new facility. I'm open to your thoughts. We are past the time when we can do any more touring, in particular of the jail. As I think I've discussed before, if not as a group, at least individually. I think our number was two hundred and fifty-one people, minus a couple of exceptions. Anybody that asked, I gave a tour through the facility. But it's still, it's a building that belongs to our public, and I think that it would be appropriate to have some kind of a opening, as it were. So what your thoughts are there, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that sounds good.
How am I doing?
Excellent.
Need more time?
Yeah. Then you go. Burn out nine more minutes. Bruce?
So also on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, was consideration of the certificate of substantial completion prepared by our architect, Alvaro. You have a copy of it in your materials. Would be looking for authorization for me to electronically sign the certificate of substantial completion with the date of substantial completion, that Friday, February twenty-eighth. And you also know that there is reference to in Exhibit A, which would include work yet to be done, a sheriff would attest to, and Tim, that work is ongoing to get the list of the punch list down. And so at an appropriate time, we'll have a list of things, if there's anything left, to attach to this. Just because it's listed, if it gets missed or it's not done, does not mean that it's excused. The work all needs to be done yet. And keep in mind, you still have about over a million dollars in retainedage yet, which was reasonably calculated to be more than what the work to be done is. And so I think we're all in good stead. So if there were a motion authorized, we need to sign electronically, that would be great.
I'll make that motion. Okay, I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Last I'd leave you with, Mr. Chairman, is that we still have a couple of what I would consider the significant issues yet to come with the new facility, not the least of which is the monument signs. It'll go up as soon as the weather is fully broken, and we know that we're deep in the spring, as well as some other landscaping issues. But having said that, I'd like to extend appreciation towards the board. It's been a tremendous undertaking, and you have extended a great deal of trust, and I appreciate it. And I hope that I've validated that trust for this project.
We want to also commend you for all your efforts, all these years, in putting this project together and coming to completion. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, with a person with a front row seat to it, it's just tremendous, the amount of effort that went into all of that, leading up to the move, to include the move, to also include the folks that Sheriff has mentioned as well, Greg and his staff, Tim and his staff. Again, I have a front row seat that nobody else has. It's really crazy.
It was a very good group effort for for everyone. So we thank everyone.
And Brenda certainly needs special recognition as well. She's done a great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm reminded, too, that back in, I think it was August of last year, September of last year, you did appoint a committee to look at the use of the facility over here. Folks at the time appointed were, including yourself, Chairman Ewing, Commissioner Sleep, the sheriff, Tim, Greg, and myself. And so...
We should probably set up a little meeting and get going on that in the very near future.
I think so. I think, I think that Sheriff and his staff and Tim and his staff are still fairly, and Greg and his staff are fairly busy at the new building. So, but we'll maybe put it on our radar of things yet to be done, and not forget about that. I've got to listen. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break here, and I'll turn the meeting over to Commissioner Jennings because I've got a conflict on this one public hearing. So I'm going to go find a seat out there and join that crowd.
Take ease for five minutes.
How are you?
Are you Jeff?
Adam.
Oh, you're Adam. I'm sorry, Adam, you're clearing. Sorry.
Brendan?
How you doing?
Doing well, yourself?
Good. Hi, Rick.
Hi, John. How are you?
Well...
I was going fishing. No, it's Sturgis. You wish you were? And you're not because of why? Because I'm too stupid to work.
You're not even blamed for that.
I know.
Your wife has a...
Well, you do, too.
We had that conversation yesterday, didn't we?
Yeah, I... I don't know.
Goose hunting?
I hired a guy to go hunt geese coming north, and they're just all over East River, I guess. My buddy, his wife's been in hospital for six months. And they, some, she had an operation, he nicked her intestine, I thought they had infected her. And she just is sick, so he brought her home to fall. Thought, wow, her wouldn't be the best out there, handling those geese with that bird, little spring net and stuff, so we both bagged them.
Well, you hear a lot here lately about surgeries, nicking different things.
She gets sepsis, though? I was on, I was on the dock labor, my peer, and the day he was hunting. I was right there. She went in for some routine surgery and stuff, and nicked something, and she ended up dying.
Got your hunting shoes on, was your handbag chasing shoes?
No, this is called.
I was going to comment on the color of those, it reminded me of a story, but I'm not going to go there.
That's amazing. If you have back surgery, you decide, yeah, maybe we'll look on all their reports.
That's all you got, John? Anybody else that would like, anybody else like to speak in favor of this? Mr. Diver?
Thank you, Mr. Purvis, my client.
Your name and address.
Randy Diver, seventeen-fifteen Scott Avenue, Skirby South Dakota, rural Lawrence County. Mr. Purvis is my client and these, these properties are all accessed by other roads now. Home State Road is on the north side of the Ewing property. And Cedar Berry has an easement that comes across the Ewing property into Cedar Berry Estates, and then it goes out to the south. So there is, every, every property is accessed. The section line does not provide access to a public road. If you try to drive the section line, you'll go, as you go to the east, it's very, very rough. So you can't get through there anyway. It would come out the bottom of the road where, where Home State turns and goes to the service road. So it's in that canyon. So really physically, you could not use this route anyway. So that's part of the reason for the vacation and then it's the vacation, having the section line there as a setback, which devalues the property for the view and the use of the property. So they're trying to eliminate the section line.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of this vacation? Any in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open up the commission, commission questions.
I'm overly approve of the vacation.
It's been moved by Commissioner Sleet, selected by Second Commissioner Flanagan to approve the vacation. Any further questions? Mr. Chairman?
Incorporated in the motion is if that the public interest will be better served by the vacation? That's the statutory language. That be included in the motion?
Yeah.
How would the public ever be benefited by vacation of a public right away?
That's the statute.
A small part of the public.
He's following the book.
Public won't be harmed.
I guess I'll amend my second, if that's the language it must be.
Okay, the motion is amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You feeling a different height? Did you bump your head?
All right. Our next public hearing is Resolution twenty-two-five-eighteen, a petition vacating a portion of a plat. And the landowners are Jeff and Chris Kenny and Jeremy and Tanya, who are the others. Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kenny is here for any questions you might have. I will preface this, I say Resolution twenty-two-five-eighteen and nineteen are related. We have them listed separately as public hearings. Eighteen would be addressing a vacation of a portion of the plat that would not be the right of way. If you look at the attached exhibit, the, there's, there's the right of way and then the utility easement, so they're being treated separately. The vacation of the plat would address not the right of way, but the easement. And then, of course, nineteen would address the right of way only. One thing to point out, that the standard for the vacation of the plat is that the vacation does not abridge or destroy any of the rights and privileges of other proprietors in such plat. So for, at least with respect to the vacation of the plat, that would be incorporated into your motion if you so choose. Otherwise, I would defer to Mr. Kenny to bring comments, see my advocate here.
Okay, did, did you want to add anything to that, sir?
When I first bought my part of that property, my neighbors said, well, there's a right of way for you to build it. An easier driveway up to where you're going to build your house, whatever. And I decided, I want a, not a super long driveway, I want a short driveway. So I built that. Then my neighbor Jeremy bought it. His section of that, where the right of way enters the road, should, but there is, there's nothing there now, it's just wood. There's no road or anything. Do you hear me? It would cut away from everything that we're doing.
Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, this is, I believe, Jeff Kenny of two-one-three-six-five Wasp Road, Lees, South Dakota.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll allow an opportunity for those in the room or online to make comments for or against this at this time. And we would ask that you would please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak for or against this? Seeing none, how about online? Not hearing anything, one more time, anyone in the room? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board for discussion or action.
Thank you.
Commissioner Flanagan?
The dominant tenet on this, is that BLM ground? Where is, where does this easement go?
From Wasp Road across our new properties. Ends at the line of my property.
Sure. Who owns that property? Because that's who has, that's who actually owns the easement, is the person that works at the end of property, the end of your property.
That'd be BLM. And then to go across around Wasp, they have access, the way it's looked to me, that they've accessed, accessed it before, which is not obviously, it comes from Turtle Seven along the side of their border, came in. And they also have access on One Horse Road where their property is all the way alongside that road.
Do we have any documentation from BLM on whether they cared about this?
We don't, we did the public hearing, notice appeared no comment from any other entity. But nothing specific.
And there appears to be access to.
It does. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it looks like the BLM property borders One Horse Road. So it's not a problem. If that is indeed the case, it's not a problem of accessing public lands.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kenny and I did talk about that, and it looked like there was sufficient access through the lands.
Are you comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay, for discussion or action?
Motion approved as always, number two-zero-two-five-dash-one-eight.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do you need any special language with that, Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, yes, that the, that the vacation does not abridge or destroy any of the rights and privileges of other proprietors in such plat.
Amended to include that.
Thank you.
Agreed.
All right.
If I may, could I also add that it also appears that the public lands are accessed through other public roads.
Very appropriate, thank you.
And this is just a utility that we're doing.
Actually, on this one, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, everyone's clear on what we're going to vote on? All right. We did have the motion in the second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
All right.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, the next public hearing is for Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-nineteen, a petition vacating a portion of section line highway. Same owners, the Kennys and the Williams. Bruce, you want to start us off on that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, very, very similar, what is exactly the same as the prior resolution you considered. This one would relate only to the right of way, would be vacating that portion of right of way indicated on the exhibit. And I would know what you have to be bringing on, if nothing else.
Okay, that was, this is a public hearing, so we'll again offer to the folks in the room online and online, if you would choose to speak for or against this. If anyone that does, would you please stand and state your name and address for our record? And is there anyone in the body of the room that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none online, anyone online? Not seeing anything one more time for the room, is anyone in the room? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board.
Motion approved, Resolution number two-zero-two-five-dash-one-nine, to include the amended language by Mr. Alka.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I see that. The next public hearing is for Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-seventeen, supplemental budget for the general fund juvenile detention for two-hundred thousand. Brenda, you want to?
Yes, I can kind of give a little bit of detail on the request for this. So we have had some individuals.
There's, there's some juveniles that have been housed at Juvenile Services Center, I think at least one or two for an extended period of time. And of course, that's very expensive. I think you had two-hundred thousand dollars budgeted for Juvenile Services Center for the entirety of two thousand twenty-five. And at this point in the year, you've used up most, if not all of that, with some of those young, young folks set to be there for a while longer. And so that, that budget amount will be exhausted very quickly. So I think what Brenda's done is, is would backfill that hopefully for the rest of the year.
Yeah, I see on our bill list today, there was quite a good activity on that one.
Yeah, we have been in contact with Port Services to kind of.
State attorney's office.
In the state's attorney.
Okay.
To seek.
It's a public hearing, so again, is there anyone in the body of the audience or online that would like to speak for or against this? Please state the name and address for the record. Anyone in the body of the room? How about online? Seeing none, one more time for the body in the room here. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board.
So does this just come from the general fund into the juvenile detention?
A move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any more further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I believe we're ready for you, Mr. Bay.
Mr. Chairman, correction, it was only a hundred thousand that was in that twenty-two-five.
And we can, we can do the bid opening at any time that you desire because we're past our eight-thirty timeframe.
I think it would be best if we just do that then.
Okay.
We are scheduled open bids for our Public Service and Safety Center Maintenance Building. We just get one bid.
Yes.
We had a requirement to be a qualified bidder, you had to attend the pre-bid site meeting. We only had one, one company attend, and that was Cleary Buildings. Tim Agon has done all of the legwork on this as far as getting estimates. And if you remember, our budgeting of last year, put, you know, the budget together for this building. So he gets over credit for, for the work that we've done. We do have an estimate here of three-hundred-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, which is a four percent increase over our budgeted amount. Once again, that's, we budgeted last year for a project for this year, so we were a little short because of the percentage increase.
Okay.
I believe we tried to use a three percent number, it came in at four percent. So it is, our estimate is slightly higher than our budgeted amount by twelve thousand dollars. The bid that we have here is from Cleary Buildings. It does have a bid bond.
And there were no addendums.
We had no addendums. I should tell you what the estimate, I guess, is, three-hundred-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. That's what our estimate for this building is. One bucks.
Would you say three-zero-two-five, what?
Seven, seven, seven. Yeah, three-hundred-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. That is the estimate that you put in there. For all work, a lump sum is three-hundred-and-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. I would like to take a little time and give Tim some time to look this over and make sure that everything in this bid meets what we put for. Sounds good, Spence.
Mr. Chairman, it's a very simple building, just a building with no interior walls.
That's correct.
But, but it is going to be, it's going to be able to have an office and a bathroom in it. At some point, utilities will be brought to the building. We'll be responsible for connecting those.
This is a forty-five by fifty-six maintenance building, cement floor, insulated building and heated to house all of our equipment that is up there to operate. Public service safety building, the supplies needed for that facility, everything will be here. We're trying to, right now, everything is kind of stored in their Sallyport where they, they load and unload prisons.
What location will it be placed?
It's going to be off to the north, I guess it would be the northeast corner of the property. Okay, so this will be the, the building. Okay, so this will be the, the building to, to house all of our equipment and supplies to operate that facility, so. Any questions, Tim is the guy, he's got it figured out, so if you have anything, ask him.
Well, he just shaking, I said no every time you say that.
He did a lot of work, Adam did a lot of work, so.
All right, we'll give you an opportunity to look it over and hopefully come back before the end of our meeting and.
Still.
Give us a recommendation.
All right, moving forward with what I have. We are, it's a lot cheaper. I do have the contracts, the chip seal and the bog, chip seal, bog seal and the crack seal projects. And I am asking the chairman for their signature when the auditors attest to, to the contracts that we can bring underway with these projects.
Chairman, I think you've already been authorized to sign them, which is.
Correct.
Documents are here.
Just through signature, so, and there's two here of each, so one's for us and one's to send the contract, okay? So no motion needed.
Well, we'll get those signed, so you can continue on, John.
Thank you. Our next item on my agenda is for our fluoride resolution, we're proposing. To set our annual fee for chloride after we opened bids at the last meeting, this will be for the, any additional work that people ask for on secondary county roads. This is something that we have always done historically, if anybody wants, that lives on a county secondary road, wants some dust control, we offer that, we've always discharged them for the chloride. The labor and the equipment, we, we're, I guess the, the, the argument is, is that the tax dollars are already paying for the equipment and our labor. We always discharge for the additional gallons of chloride used, and this year that is a dollar thirty one per gallon. Bruce Alka has put together the resolution and he has also put together our, our application and amended that so that it is not just an application, but it reflects the state statute as a petition and an agreement with the individual.
Bruce, John for initiating that, so because you did get the price for your, your supplies last, last meeting, we were able to, John was able to derive a cost. And so that's included in the resolution, going forward, we'll probably adopt the resolution at the same time each year when we know what the price is. And then again, we also have the, the new form, the application, the agreement.
Can we do that today?
Yes, you can, sir.
All right.
Is there, is there a special distance that you figured the dollar thirty one times on?
Dollar thirty one is exactly what the bid was, that is what the per gallon price was at.
Oh, all right, so. How much distance do you figure, somebody wants to hold a dust control, go so many feet above or below the house?
Everybody's, we let that, that's part of the application, they can, they ask us for a certain amount of gallons.
Oh, for gallons.
To cover their footage, we give them our recommendation, if they want to, if they want to cover a thousand feet in front of their house, we give them the gallon recommendation based on the width of their road. Some people want to more, and some people want less, usually less, just because of the expense. You know, it's, it's usually a, a rough, roughly a gallon a foot when you're doing a twenty four foot wide service, so. If somebody wants to do fifteen hundred feet in front of them, it's expensive for them to, to have dust control. We've offered this for many years, we've just kind of offered it as more of a handshake type of agreement, and this kind of puts it a little more of a, of a legal type document under the state statute. Thank you.
Motion to approve Resolution number two zero two five, yes, one zero.
And the one two.
And, pardon me?
And the one two.
Yes, sir.
Please, thank you.
Second. Okay, that motion made by Tisdale and second by Flanagan for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
You have the resolution adopted, you got it?
Got one.
Okay. I am also now asking for. The following items to be declared surplus, we are going to have a sale again, this is after we purchased our. New equipment for this year, we're, we're going to surplus two pickups, a two thousand Ford F-150, nineteen ninety eight GMC Sierra twenty five hundred. And a two thousand and ten International WorkStar truck. Other items that would be on that sale would be all of the signs from our latest sign project that you guys have already declared a surplus. Last year, and we're going to sell them all at the sale.
Bruce. John, this is an online auction again?
This will be, we were, we're planning on using the purple wave auction like we did the last time, hopefully we have the same success, the last auction was very successful, we, we, if I remember right, we brought in almost eighty thousand dollars on our last sale of, of surplus.
Okay, what kind of shape are these in?
Um, well, the, the Ford F-150 was actually a, a pickup that we inherited from the sheriff's department years ago, it has a hundred and ninety one thousand six hundred and ninety nine miles on it. And it still runs, so I mean, that's something. Ninety eight GMC was a pickup that we bought and used, it shows a hundred and seventy five thousand five hundred and sixty, and I don't believe that is accurate, but. And again, it also runs, so the international truck is currently not running. It is a twin to the truck we sold at the last auction, not running, and we brought, we brought six thousand two hundred dollars at the auction. I hope that this brings that to.
Engine trouble or?
Emissions trouble.
Okay.
Emissions that are non-reparable, for that matter, the last truck we sold went to Guatemala where there are no emissions.
Wow.
Hopefully we can have that same success, it's an auction, so who knows?
Okay.
Bruce?
And because we're using the online auction service, we have to remember that we have to do the publications of the notice in the paper.
Yes, we do have to remember that.
Not that we've ever forgotten, but just as a reminder to ourselves.
Okay. Commissioner, sleep.
Did the owner of the, uh, new trucks give you a trade-in value bid on the?
We did not ask for trade-in value. That would have been a waste of paper.
End time.
Can't be looking for a motion to?
A move to declare the, uh, three items surplus.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Jennings, seconded by Commissioner Tisdale to, uh, uh, declare the, the three vehicles as surplus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And I will have some information when the auction is set and, and what items will be on that auction, so everybody will know.
Are a lot of those signs, are they aluminum?
Yes.
So we should get some activity on that.
I don't think so, I've looked back at some of the previous purple wave auctions for large sign allotments, and they, some of them I've known very well, better than I expected, so.
Okay.
Um, we'll see. Um, as Bruce had stated earlier, we did get a phone call and an email yesterday from the state DOT, a phone call from Rose Engineering. Uh, the state wants to go forward with a Maitland Bridge, that, that is the one that we've initiated all the work, it's moving very quickly. This is.
To one we built bypass around?
We already built the bypass, engineering, pre-engineering is all done, hydraulics are done, all the permits are in place. We've come, we, all the certificates are in place, the state has concurred, everything's ready to go, and they are looking for, uh, nothing to sign on this, uh, just, uh, it has to be reflected in the minutes that we, that, uh, we set a bid date, a date to advertise. We're officially to advertise and set a bid date, and we, we are planning on the bid date of April twenty second, twenty twenty five, eight thirty in the morning.
Okay, will that be a box covered as well?
That will be a box covered as well. Yes, sir.
All right.
Do we need to make a motion to that back?
No, second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Flanagan, seconded by Commissioner Jennings to, to allow the, what's the bid date again?
April twenty second.
April twenty second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
This would be the advertisement and the letter from the state.
Thank you.
Anything further, sir?
Um, just I want to make sure everybody's aware that we plan on setting our spring and summer hours to start on April the seventh. With weather permitting, if we don't get any big blizzards or anything, that is what we're planning on doing, that we put our, the highway department's work hours from six in the morning to four thirty, Monday through Thursday. Bruce, just want everybody to.
If John is down, there's one other item on again that's about Roosevelt Road making that's in, it's Janine Gurnis here, who I'd like to address you when you're prepared.
Okay.
If John's.
Are you finished up, John?
I am.
Okay, this current, if you'd like to come forward and. And for our record, if you'd state your name and address for the record again, please. And you have the floor once you're ready.
Good morning, and my name is Janine Gurn, and I'm at seventy four Cliff Street right now. My concern is just about the road that goes Mount Rushmore from Main Street on this side. I know the other side where the lodge is, is maintained.
Mount Roosevelt, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Being a tourist attraction, and the fact that I know I used to be able to drive that road safely. And you no longer can coming down this side. I think that's, I think it should be taken care of because it's a tourist attraction, we're a tourist town. And I have a tourist company, and I recommend that Mount Roosevelt, and I tell the history of that. I think it's unsafe, and for over a hundred years, it was in condition to be driven on and originally made with shovels and picks and wheelbarrows. And I think it should be fixed. And I think we have the means to do that, I'm wondering why it isn't.
Just the same road, a stretch of road that the gentleman from Sparkish was.
Yeah, it is, yes.
That we.
Chairman?
It goes up between the bank and the Franklin.
Can't, Commissioner sleep? I was going to ask y'all, I'm having any comments, ma?
I'm going by what I've got here, you may have these if you want, I'm sure you have them anyway.
Yeah.
Um.
We're familiar with it.
Okay, but I, um, I, I know we have funds. And I, I just think, I, I went up there, and I was used to coming back down this side, went up from the lodge, and, um, it scared me. I was afraid to take the car around that curve, especially that first curve, because you can't, if you met another car, there's no way. And it's got big rocks in the, in the road, and, and it, and they said it wasn't maintained, and I just wonder why.
Okay, John, would you care to weigh in on this?
Well, uh, the Mount Roosevelt Road is, uh, does not service anybody other than tourists, I would agree a hundred percent that it is a dangerous road. It is not in condition for traffic, uh, daily traffic. It is more of a fire type trail is what I would consider it, it, uh, it's a road that, um, we have never maintained to this level. If it was, you know, if it was ever in a condition to drive, it isn't now. As far as funding for this road, we have no funding to put towards this road at this time. Um, I don't even know what it would cost, I would have to, to dig into this to find out what it would cost to fix this one point, one and one tenth mile of road. The, uh, the road is not even close to our standard, I believe that it would be very expensive, I, I would, I can put a number to it, I, I don't know. I think I would have to hire an engineer almost to come up with a number for this, I, I believe there's going to be drilling and blasting involved, much like they did when they built the road originally to try to get it wider. Uh, just to go up and put gravel on this road to make it better to drive, I think would be throwing good money after bad, I think that gravel would wash away within just a matter of a few years. I think that the road needs a complete redesign and rebuild, so I think it would be quite expensive.
Well, and the, uh, the, uh, Mount Roosevelt can be accessed from the north safely, correct?
That is correct.
That road did come in handy during the O-two fire too.
Bruce?
John, is it true that, just so everybody knows, so it's Shining Street, I think, is the first part of the road, and it's a city road for, for, for.
I think it goes to Denver.
Denver.
Right to Denver.
And, and then, um, I think, just so everybody knows about where Tony Bradley's house is, that's where she, the start, Sharp incline starts.
That's where the county maintenance ends signs are posted, right past Tony Bradley's house.
And that's usually closed in the wintertime for traffic, isn't it?
It has zero maintenance in the winter, nobody plows snow on it from either side, you know, from, from, uh, Moon Mountain Road or from Denver Street, there's no snow removal. It's, it's not a maintained road to the level, it's, it is also a road that we just had the state remove from the primary system, put it secondary system for this very reason.
Well, I, I guess my personal opinion due to the fact that Mount Roosevelt can be easily accessed from the north, I, I guess I wouldn't see any need to spend money just to even hire an engineer to look into it.
I'm just wondering why it was open when I came here and it was drivable, and now it isn't, um, who maintained it before?
I don't know, it, because like John said, the county's never.
It wasn't us.
No?
The county's never maintained this road outside of, of the other, the north side is the only one that we've ever done any work on, and that is, uh, we've gravelled it twice in thirty years. And it is not plowed for snow removal, like I said, that the road on the other side doesn't really service any permanent residents, or just cabins up there, there's, there's, I don't know who takes care of that.
Do you think that maybe it's possible, if not being able to open that road for traffic, that you could completely close it, because anybody that goes up from Mount Roosevelt down the other side and starts around that corner is in danger of.
That, that has been my objective for the last three years.
Why can't somebody do that?
I will, state statute is a fight to close a road, I would also. I think public, public safety, I think you're better served by having even a, even a, less than safe road and having no road in case of fire or other, uh, public disaster or, or problem. There's a lot more than just, just, uh, that part of Rose, Mount Roosevelt, that service is up there, I used to drive all over that, my Jeep, basically.
Looks like it's going to remain the way it is from what I'm hearing here.
Yeah, looks like it.
Bruce?
Can you say, spell your first and your last name for us, so we can make sure we have it accurate. Thank you.
And I'm not going to address today because the people up on that, in that development on the other side by, you know, on that side, the lodge side. They called me and asked me to address the issues for them, and they're wondering about their, their fire road. It was apparently going to go through one point, and it changed to coming out on Burnham Road, but somebody's got property there that they didn't want anybody going through. And so they don't still have a, a clear idea of how to get out of there, other than the one way in and one way out.
That's, if you're talking about the new Deadwood subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have anything.
You don't?
No.
Is that the city? Okay, thank you.
I know, I, I'm looking at that map, I know what you're talking about now, but I, I don't know.
All right, well, thank you, Janine, for your concerns and.
Well, I tried.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, I see you back in the room, are you ready to make a recommendation?
Yep, I make the recommendation that go ahead and sign the, the, the bid, everything's in there, the bid bond, I filled out the bid tab, everything's good to go.
Okay, award the bid to, uh, is it McCleary?
Clearing the motion, that's a motion to follow recommendation, accept the closing bid, waiting all the requirements.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
But the motion also included authorization to sign any construction agreements, authorize a notice, authorize a notice to proceed.
That was right where I was going.
Thank you.
Well, I knew the signing document would happen, but.
And I was just waiting for Brandon to put that language into second, so.
Bruce, John. We have a motion from Commissioner Flanagan, seconded by Commissioner Jennings for approval to award the bid. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you.
Is there anything to sign in here now?
No.
Have it done by this weekend?
There was, you had some signature things.
Does that clear up everything for you, John?
Uh, unless you have anything for me, I'm done.
Could we take a break for a second?
Yeah, we'll take a five minute break, I still don't have my fence up.
Well, I think next meeting, you might have a chance to talk to them.
All right, we're back.
Well.
Call a meeting back to order.
But couldn't have done.
Our next uh, item is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, the Joint Powers Agreement. Lawrence County and City of Spearfish. The action required will be approval or denial of this resolution.
Bruce.
If, if I may, Amber was, she tried to join us if she could. She's out of town. Doesn't look like she's there, so if I can, I I will start. Kevin is also here from the City of Spearfish. I appreciate him coming. So for your consideration today is an amended joint powers agreement. I think it's from my, from records I could find, the last time you adopted one was two thousand nineteen. And so this would amend that document. It's been in place now for a a a number of, a number of years. I think significantly, and I would defer to Kevin seeing Amber work on it more obviously than I did. One of the key features of it is it would reduce the area that has been encompassed in the joint powers agreement. If you shrink that down and then ultimately uh, be presented to you soon will be a, a, an order, a subdivision ordinance that would govern E T G area. And I think that the idea is that these areas, the joint powers agreement, the E T G agreement would then align, obviously subject to your approval, right? So it would be a lot easier, less than confusion for probably the the public and everybody in in knowing what applies where. Uh, I should add, I think the City of Spearfish approved this last night at its meeting. Is that fair?
No.
It was last month.
Last month.
Like three weeks ago.
Okay, so, but it it has been approved.
Yep.
And and so I think significantly to understand what this is. If you look at the last whereas on the uh, on the agreement, I think it's the last whereas, this governs uh, international codes, contractor licensing and floodplain administration. So that's the, those are the activities are contemplated by this agreement in that area. We tried to put together kind of a summary sheet to try to help distinguish what the joint powers is as opposed to the three mile plating jurisdiction. Uh, if you look at that, at the sheet here, kind of a side by side comparison. Uh, joint powers agreement, again in the column, what it does, it regulates floodplain regulation, building permits. Yeah, it says variances in there and that's a bit misleading as Senator Dyer pointed out to me. It doesn't, the the county retains approval of variances, but what it does and is reflected in the agreement on page or paragraph four, it talks about a variance coordination procedure, but ultimately the approval or denial of any variances left to the county, too. Obviously, it's board of adjustment. And similar language was included in the the current agreement as well. Uh, so it does not affect zoning, does not affect conditional use permits. Uh, all of that remains the same from from your perspective. And again, if you look at the other column, that's relating to the three mile plating jurisdiction. This ordinance that that Kevin and Amber have been working on that is coming to you shortly without a.
Kevin, did you want to add anything?
No, yeah, this is um, we're just trying to shrink down our boundary and yeah, the intent is after this we'll um, go into our extraterritorial jurisdiction ordinance and then shrink that boundary down as well to mirror this. So we just have one clean boundary across both. Um, from that standpoint, this, the joint powers one was merely just to clean up that boundary and then to uh, kind of clean up some of the language. We had some language in there that referenced our ordinances that no longer are numbered and labeled in a certain way. So just kind of keep it a little bit more generic. So if we do make any modifications, we don't have to come back and amend this this agreement as well.
Any discussion from the board? Commissioner Shlave.
Does this, this mean that each party, the county and the city has to agree on a deal or or can either one uh, do do what they want?
This is cooperative, so this is a little bit different than the three mile jurisdictions. So the three mile jurisdiction that the city has major street plan file can exercise plating jurisdiction up to three miles from its boundary. So that's the thing that's going to come. This is not it. This is sort of an agreement between between the county and the city. It's probably been in place in one version or another for twenty years or more.
Well, I've known a bullion, I think, but not, uh, they weren't very far apart a lot of times. And both the county and the city had to agree on it or if one or the other disagreed with them, there was more discussion.
I I think this is one of those instances where you don't have to approve it. Again, the city has and so you're not obligated to, I don't think. But the county, I guess, maybe does benefit, depends on how you look at it. Uh, the city's doing some building inspection outside of the county, so now this boundary is gonna shrink, so our planning novice, our building inspection will have to pick that up. But there is some benefit there and also floodplain management um, that the city is taking care of as well.
I know we've had it in the past, but I didn't think it covered a very big area.
It's getting smaller.
Smaller now. Much smaller now.
Commissioner Jennings.
Uh, so I I appreciate the work that the city and and the county have done on this from the planning departments. Uh, it's it's going to be much less confusing to people having one line instead of two. Uh, that that's a big step forward. Uh, there's some things on it that I don't particularly, that I'm not comfortable with, uh, but I understand the reasoning. Uh, just looking at the map. You know, it's, it's far easier to do maps on section lines and do boundaries on section lines. Uh, in some cases, it it conflicts a little bit with our comprehensive plan, particularly north of town. Um, or it would have been maybe better to have the boundary on on a road instead of a section line. But uh, that's not really a deal breaker for me and and nor is some of the, some of the language I maybe would have had a little differently in the agreement, but there again, it's, it's not a deal breaker. It's, it's a significant improvement from what we've had.
Yeah, I appreciate shrinking down some of it.
Well, there's other clarity that went into it too that.
Yeah.
Would help a lot.
Yeah.
But them helping with a lot of the floodplain stuff too, well, is good.
It's a, it's a big step forward, absolutely.
Kevin and Amber spent a lot of time on this. It's been a long time in the making.
And a refreshing to see the county and the city working together.
Yep. Yep.
You are able to take action on it today, so if there is a motion to approve it, you can approve it today.
I would so move. Okay, we have a motion by Tisdale and seconded by uh, Commissioner Flanagan to approve the joint powers agreement. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman?
Kevin, I have a copy of the original. Would the chairman sign? Will you have the city sign it?
I already have our signed version, so if I can get that one, I'll, I'll get it all squared away.
Yeah, let's take a quick break.
I'm gonna pause recording.
You have it with. We're ready?
Yes.
Okay, we are back to order. And next item is the twenty twenty-five dash zero one final plat, preliminary and final plat approved January sixth, twenty twenty-five, authorize a highway authority signatures.
Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, is it a plat that you approved back at your first meeting in January, January sixth? You approved a preliminary and final plat. This is a plat for, it was a lot line adjustment in the vicinity of Cheyenne Crossing. Uh, so you did approve both of those. It was anticipated at the time because the, I think the access comes off of fourteen A that the DOT would sign it as a state highway. The DOT has declined to sign the plat. I don't think John Bay is willing to sign it either as it does not come up a county road, so there's this dilemma that there's a requirement that there be a road authority writing or approval in order for the plat to be approved. And so I'm requesting, as we've done in the past, to authorize me to sign as a road authority as N A. Uh, the idea being that by approving the plat, you're not, you know, trying to say that you're taking any part of a road on or any obligation of any sort, merely to facilitate the recording of the plat.
Mr. Production is here to have my dogs, my clients understand they're gonna be responsible for the road. They don't expect the county to do anything like that. They just we uh, it is just an adjustment line with decreasing the density from three lots to two lots, which is what.
Yeah.
Was expected in Spearfish Canyon.
So we'll need a motion to authorize uh.
I make a motion to.
Bruce.
To direct Bruce to sign on the highway authority. That's not applicable, applicable to facilitate the final of the plat.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Flanagan, seconded by Tisdale for approval to allow Bruce to sign it. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You battered a hundred today. All right. Right on time, Natural Resource Committee. Who's gonna start this off? Buffalo Forest Health Project. All right, Bill. Come up and utilize your couple minutes.
One minute?
Two.
Two today? Two minutes, okay. I appreciate you guys giving us some time to talk about the Buffalo environmental assessment. I think Derek's kind of giving you a pretty good heads up on where we're at. In in general, it's not a huge project like Sabuk was, but it's in an area that has seen some activity in the past. Uh, it's also somewhat amazing that with the, with the activity that's been there, there's still significant amount of stands depending on what figures you use for the Forest Service, anywhere from three to five hundred to almost five thousand acres of heavily stocked stands, which is probably about a third of the project that uh, is in uh, medium to high risk for mountain pine beetle. And I think that's where, uh, I think there's a really good. I mean, it's just like we've been, we've been hearing over and over, where's timber, where's the timber? And I mean, there's a great opportunity to do work in those areas that need the work, that have mountain pine beetles based on what the Forest Service's own data shows. I mean, they have it actually on the ground. So that, uh, I think that's, you know, a big part of this whole thing is they've got, you know, quite a few treatments. But we're not sure the treatments are in the right place. Uh, we don't want to see them treating areas that don't need to be treated and there's some of that, we think. Um, there are areas that should be treated that they aren't treating. And then many, uh, it's pretty much being driven by the fact that the Forest Service lost what they call four B, four C structural stages, which is mature uh, uh, moderate stocked, overstocked stands. Um, and they want to uh. Um, and they want to uh, they lost them during the last mountain pine beetle and they're trying to preserve them. Set them aside uh, for future old growth. And we're seeing that, saw that in Camaro, we saw that in Zeppelin. And it it's, it's, they have to come to a point where. Come realization that you can't store this, we got great examples of it. Uh, we need to be trying to make these stands resilient for fire, for mountain pine beetle. And uh, and also for the wildlife habitat, so. Um, I was going to invite both Paul and Mitch to add in, I think, you know, and they, they, I was gone last week to Arizona, so. They all put this thing together and they did a really good job. Well, one of the things that um, I think we need to look at real hard as a commission and committee and as a county. Is that this is, this project is a great example why we need to have cooperative agency status. This project started uh, last summer, initiated, they spent all last fall doing all their data gathering. Uh, they just had a lot of meetings out there. They gave this to us at the end of winter, can't get out there to look. We didn't know anything about it, didn't have any of the data. And if we would have had cooperative agency, we could have got out there earlier and looked at this, maybe helped them carve or make a a better project. Because, so this cooperative agency status, this is one good example why it's not working. The other part of that is, is that they're going from a uh, scoping. Right into the final, there's no draft EA. So in the past, we've been scoping comments and everything. Then they have the draft EA, we get to look at it again, provide comments, they're going right into the decision uh, after they get the comments. So that gives us no opportunity to do anything on talking to them. We can't even now, after scoping, we can't even go in there and talk to them about our comments because we don't have cooperative agency. I mean, maybe informally, we don't have, we don't have any formal organization on that, so. I'm going to let Paul and Mitch. Go ahead and talk about Buffalo a little bit more on the specifics, but.
Kate?
I'll just add in that um, that cooperating agency part, part of this discussion next too, but. Um, what, what, you know, the Forest Service can write um, an EA and just go ahead with it. As long as they did public scoping, they are allowed to do that. They often don't on larger projects, just to allow more input. But this seems to be kind of the trend they're going, so. If they keep going that route on future projects, it does make for cooperating agency status more important. Because the cornerstone of that status is early and and often involvement. That's the, if you want to sum it up in one word, it's early and often uh, involvement, no surprises, really. So that's my thing there. I do want to say that in general, this is a good project. And from a lot of standpoints, fire, people's, wildlife, um, there is comments to limit impacts with fermentees. Um, we, the district ranger uh, was very cordial, Steve, and we had a good discussion with him. Couple times, he is willing to allow for flexibility in where they do the treatments for even commercial harvest. And in the past, they have not been, so. I think that's a win, because we've argued that real hard.
Yeah, that's a plus.
Yes, because they don't always know what, what they see on their, their computer screens or in the uh, aerial photos. Doesn't always match exactly what you see in the field, so that's a big win, that's all I have.
Paul?
Thank you, yeah, just, I won't repeat everything you just heard, I just wanted you guys to know too that these guys did a lot of the, the legwork and and putting this together. I, I reviewed it after Bill really dug into it. The comments are structured in a way, so you guys know, hopefully read through them, but it's not about going out there and trying to cut every tree out there to save, you know, a small mill. It's really getting back to trying to manage the stands for the right reasons and walk away from other stands for the right reasons. Felt like this project was, was way off the mark up there. Um, so that, that's, that's where we crafted these comments.
You know, they certainly should be taking care of the bug part of it, for sure.
Yeah.
Kind of got a little bit of a handle on that.
You'd think we, it hasn't been that a lot, all ago.
No.
Getting close to being uninformal.
Kate, anything further, gentlemen? We appreciate the work you've done.
John? I guess one of the things that I, you know, I don't have the expertise of these gentlemen too. But the thing that I found probably most insulting and driving to determine whether or not we could be cooperating agency status was. They said that we didn't have the expertise, these people are absolutely uh. Heads above most of the people I've ever met, they, I've learned a lot about the forest and stuff, I think that's an insult. And I think that should not go unnoticed of them.
Yeah, these gentlemen here have been in the industry a long time.
Yep.
Is there anything we can do about it? Nothing? We've begged.
They submitted resumes and I mean, it's so in that, um, you know, my.
Yeah, go ahead.
We, we did ask for cooperating status for this project and for the Sawup project. You know, we, we want to go back to the cooperating status for, you know, all projects, but um. I think, and so in the comments, we requested a response. And so Eric's been having discussions with the forest supervisor. I think there's probably some political changes in the wind. And I would recommend just, we'll, we'll see what happens right now. You know, Eric's pushing on his end, but what are your thoughts?
Well, I, I, I think we got to up the pressure now. I, I think that the time, I mean, time is, timing is everything. And I think there's, should be some, I, I do, been talking with uh, Steve. He has been pretty good to work with. He needs more guidance. And I agree with what Paul is saying is that uh, we want to treat the, the stands for the right reasons at the right time. And they are, one of the things that Steve said is that they went to um, this area because they were concerned. That other areas on the district had too many issues with bats and restrictions. And he said this area had fewer because it doesn't have the hybernaculas that say on the east side has, you know, with the financial caves and all that. He said there is a little bit of back, bad activity up there, but not a lot. Um, they're also doing a, I think, a really good job with aspen management. Been one of our core feelings is, you know, they talk about removing the pine and conifers out of the aspen and everything and. But the problem is, is that unless you have some type of event that encourages the aspen to regenerate. And regenerate in large areas, then the aspen continues to die. It gets older and older and older, the, the cones die and then you lose your aspen. Um, so uh, in that, this project, they're planning on doing like they did with Paul Reese back in the late, late nineteen eighties, early nineties. As they went in and clear cut a pretty good areas of aspen. And today, those aspen stands are just gorgeous. And they're structurally helping the habitat of wildlife that depend on them. And uh, I think they're, I think they're going to try to do that more. And I, I, that, that's a good thing, so. They are doing some good things, but I think, like Paul said. A lot of the areas that they've proposed for management might be for the wrong reasons or that's a wrong, wrong structural stage. And we'd like to see them do more with the heavier stock stands that are really uh, at high risk for mountain pine beetle.
Well, I was encouraged when Mitch said that uh, uh, they would. Be will, be willing to, yeah, yeah, that's, that's a, a good step forward, yeah. So thank you guys for all your hard work.
And just so you know, on the cooperating agency stuff, one thing, I've written up a chronology of what the county's gone through. Trying to get that done since uh, the previous, and I'll send it to you, Eric. So that.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a dated chronology that lays its two pages, but I'll get it to you and whatever you can do with that.
Yeah, so we need to be moving on that deal pretty quick here.
Yeah.
But those chronologies.
We'll get these, there's some really good examples, just like this one, Eric is a great example.
Does the board have any questions for these gentlemen? Otherwise, I guess we need a, do we need a, Bruce, do we need a uh?
Yep, we need to, all moves to adopt, the, the comments is presented as our comments for the Buffalo project.
Allow my signature?
Yeah, can do that.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Jennings, seconded by Tisdale for approval of the comments and allow the chairman to sign. Any further discretion?
Uh, just that these comments, like these guys said, it reflects the, the need to manage the forest. And and the forest needs to be managed properly, whether it's for, for mountain pine beetle, for it's the right structural stage. You, you can't just walk away and ignore uh, management on the forest because it's, it's going to go downhill. It, it always needs to be managed, you can't just put it on the shelf and and let it grow. Uh, it's, it's susceptible to, to disease and insects and fire when you do that, so that's, that's what these comments reflect.
All right. All those in favor of the motion before us will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
One, one last thing I wanted to bring up. I don't know how many of you saw the interview with uh, Dave Mertz on KOTA about the forest. Forest Service mismanaging the Black Hills National Forest, but is it, it, it was of an area that didn't look pretty good. But it was the old McVay Burn. And the McVay Burn burned in nineteen thirty-nine, Forest Service came in afterwards, replanted it, but they used Colorado pine to do it. And it's offsite and it didn't grow very good. And it grew bushy, it was full of disease. And um, so Forest Service, to their credit, said, hey, this isn't going to go anywhere. I mean, the, the McVay Burn was like thirty thousand acres of larger fires at the time. Uh, they re, like I said, they replanted it, so the Forest Service decided, hey, we're going to try to start all over. So they went in and cut all this stuff, most of it was non-commercial. They chipped it, they did whatever. So a former Forest Service employee, Dave Mertz, went in and went to KOTA, he's been to other news organizations. And took pictures and he talked about, hey, if the Forest Service starts to uh, increase the cut, this is what your forest is going to look like. Totally misrepresented, didn't say anything about the background of this area. In fact, Paul, you said there were signs up there?
Almost, just out of frame of his picture with the sign.
That explained this, but the, the, the press didn't make any questions. They didn't go look at the sign, say, hey, this is what it's about. So on Thursday morning, and hopefully the Pioneer will be there. Uh, they're going to be talking about, hey, this, you know, yeah, let's have a debate about that, but let's not misrepresent the facts. Let's have a, a healthy debate about where we're going with this forest, but he totally misrepresented this whole thing. And he's also been on Searchlight, that, that digital and, and other places. And so um, you know, uh, hopefully we'll get a good, good response. And the, the media will be out there and, and actually we can have a good characterization about what's going on here.
All right.
But it was really poorly misrepresented.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to our uh, items from the public. At this time, we'll allow comments from the public in the room or online.
We always lose our public every time we get to this section.
Yeah, is there anyone online or in the room that would like to speak at this time? We'll close that, close the public comment period and allow items from the commissioners. Anyone have anything to add? Brain cells today. I have nothing, looks like I do either. No, Bruce?
I think uh, your next two meetings will be board of adjustment, so at least that. Equalization, equalization on board. And so your, your next two things will be kind of long, or I anticipate it being rather long, I guess. Um, I think that, I don't know what we can do for lunch, I think that Earl's Sandwich has reduced their menu down to a handful. And Dave's over here, I think is relocating, so.
Oh, Dave's is moving?
I think they're inside the landmark now.
Well, it's still closed then.
But if you're not serving, I know you're not ready yet.
Oh.
But I have, I have really few food options to offer you, so I don't know if you want to think about that and get back to me or go on your own for your old bag lunch?
No.
So I, I don't know what I'm.
Jail kitchen's too far.
Yeah, yeah. So uh, I'm not a bit of a law.
Well, Earl's Sandwich should have some sandwiches, but they.
There, there, there's two way down.
Really?
Yeah. Everyone's at last.
I like those. Well, you've got a little time to think about it. Anything else, minimum? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Kate, we're adjourned.